Good evening. Today is Monday, July 22nd, 2024, and the time is 7:00 PM. This meeting of the Prosper ISD Board of Trustees is hereby called to order according to Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Representing the quorum this evening, we have Mr. Webb, Mr. Dial, Mrs. Dixon, Mr. Cavender, Mr. Linker, Mr. Van Wolf, and myself, Bill Beavers. The Board of Trustees extends a heartfelt gratitude to our entire Prosper ISD community. We're deeply appreciative of our residents who approved a $2.7 billion bond for new schools in construction, our dedicated teachers and staff who tirelessly serve our students and families, our parents who support our educational mission through volunteering, donations, and sharing their expertise, our exceptional campus and district leaders who believe, who we believe are the finest in Texas, continuously striving for excellence. Your collective commitment to Prosper ISD is what makes our district thrive. Thank you for choosing and supporting our schools. Mr. Dial, you've got the invocation this evening.
Sure. Go back your heads. Probably God, we thank you for today. We thank you for just bringing us here safely tonight to address matters of the district. I'm grateful for a great summer so far, and as we gear up for school, to start, I just pray that you would keep all the families in our community, the staff, the students that are preparing to come back to school, safe, and that they would wrap up summer in a big way and be ready to come back, ready to learn, ready to have fun, ready to build relationships this coming year. Got to just ask for wisdom and discernment as we handle the matters before us tonight, and just overall, thank you for the many blessings you've given us. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, the Texas pledge.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and invisible.
Mr. Webb, you've got the reading of the board vision.
The board's vision is to ensure a safe and supportive educational environment that promotes academic excellence and opportunities, honors traditions, fosters student learning, facilitates effective recruitment and retention of talented educators, and grows all people at all levels.
Thank you, sir. You've got a great voice, by the way, I should say. I mean, God, do you want to read the rest of this now? As always, this meeting is being conducted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, which can be found in Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. All of our voting must be in public, but we can privately discuss certain items, including but not limited to matters regarding individual employees, individual students, land acquisitions in real estate, school safety and security, and matters requiring legal advice. However, after that private discussion, any final vote must be in complete view of the public. In accordance with the Open Meetings Act, the agenda for tonight's meeting was posted for the public to view at least 72 hours before the meeting. On the screen in front of you, you will have some upcoming dates here, but I want to draw everybody's attention to August the 13th. It's the first day of school. It feels like the summers are short, but hey, we are back at it here quickly. And as the parent of five kiddos in the district, I am looking forward to school being back open, and I think that that's something that is shared by a lot of our parents in the district. Let's see here, celebrations this evening?
Yes, we have a few, and excited that we have a couple of students, too, that we're going to be able to recognize. We don't always get to do that in the summer, but we've had some success rolling into the summer. So I'd like to ask Danush, Gaye, and Hayden Park, please come forward. Hayden and Danush were previously recognized from the UIL Speech and Debate State Champions this year. So National Speech and Debate Association National Tournament, fourth place. Hayden Park has graduated. Sadly, we will be losing them to the University of Texas, but we're happy about that. Danush Gaye is a junior, so we get one more year with you. Excellent. And then I'd like to invite Hannah Rodriguez, Shelby Zaro, and Jack Loeb to come forward also as their coaches, because as we know, the coaching aspect is a huge piece of power to their success. And we're lucky to have all three of those great teachers. So here's some information. This national tournament is the largest competition of its kind in the world, I'll say, but the world, bringing thousands of students from across the country and multiple countries, 180 teams. And after the 10th round, this Rock Hill High School team was the only Texas team remaining in the tournament. In the 13th round, they beat the last undefeated team to earn a spot in the semifinals. So very impressive and certainly a high honor with what they were capable of doing. Now, this is always the thing that I think if you don't know about debate, it seems to be like, whoa, what? So how many hours total, would you say, going through all those rounds?
With each one of those rounds, it's probably hour and a half at least. So in total, it had to have been over 30 hours, and the preparation side of that is a number I could comprehend.
Yes, it's very intense. And most people don't know that about debate, and there's a high level of dedication, obviously, by our students to commit to that, because a lot of things are giving up, because many of these competitions end up on weekends. And so it takes them away from their families or social activities with their friends. And then for our coaches, it takes them away from their families and social activities that they also have the opportunity. So I want to say thank you on behalf of Prosper ISD for what you all have done, your really parlaying out there on the world stage. And then thank you to our coaches for just the countless hours that you give. I know Shelby, I was holding her baby not too long ago at the UIL. I didn't make bank with her, and I thought, how does she do this? But I see that your husband is holding the baby in his arms. Usually there's some family members standing in the back, so we really appreciate everything that you've all done, and certainly congratulations to you all.
Great work.
We have Nolan Leffrey, and so Nolan is with us tonight. We're recognizing him, so we've had two meetings where we've recognized Eagle Scouts, and we've found another. So that's awesome. So glad that you're here. The Eagle Scout, for those of you who may not know, is the highest achievement of rank attainable in the school scouts, the Boy Scouts of America program. And since its inception in 1911, only 4% of scouts have earned this rank after a lengthy review process. I've been fortunate enough to be on the interview panel for scouts, and it's a pretty intense thing when you're sitting and having all these different individuals interview you and ask you questions. But it's really the countless hours that they give and dwell before they can get here. And to the stats, at only 4%, rising up to this level, a lot of kiddos will kind of fall off, especially as they start getting into middle school and high school, their curricular. And so for you to stick it out all the way through, to see it all the way through, is a great accomplishment. So tell us a little bit about your service project.
So my Eagle project was an organization system for my private school band. So their new dorm room had like all their selling supply and all of their equipment and all that. And so I built the shelving unit for their closet and for their dishes. So that's where all their selling and it was just kind of that.
I've walked by there multiple times, and thought, there's something needs to be done. And you stepped in, and you fixed this mess, so your superintendent's proud of that. The band organized, so I think they just run through their costumes or their uniforms in there and run out, right? And so, yeah, appreciate you doing that, and certainly, certainly giving back to PHS and to the band program and to Prosper ISD. So they, congratulations. Okay, so we have a couple of awards also for our employees. So first of all, we have Kelly Stimmick. So Kelly, you'll come forward. Kelly even works in our business office, specifically with purchasing, procurement, and housing. The job has definitely made Prosper ISD better in all areas. So I won't say thank you, that's not on the script, but I'm going to say thank you, because she does a phenomenal job. So Kelly actually has been awarded the Tasbo Dr. N. L. West Scholarship. And she won this through the Texas Association of School Business Officials. And this scholarship is for $2,000 for four years, for a total of $8,000. And the executive director of Tasbo said they have a record number of applicants this year. And she is currently pursuing her Bachelor of Science in Business Administration with a concentration in public administration. So congratulations, Kelly, and to know, I can't even imagine how many applicants came in from across the states. And I know, as educators, we're always trying to go after these things to kind of offset that expense, and so for you to be so honored is truly an honor, but certainly to an honor for Prosper ISD because of the work that you do and the impact that you have on so many students and staff members and our community. So thank you. We're going to ask everybody who's in the business office here to support Kelly to come on up as well. Come on.
Look, I don't want to.
Don't be shy.
Come on, don't be shy. Always be cool.
What a crew. Nicely done.
Kelly as well.
I love it. It's awesome.
Congratulations. But wait, there's more. Donna Hewitt, please come forward. Donna was Hewitt is one of our technology executive directors, and she works silently and quietly behind the scenes to make sure everything goes off without a hitch. And we're so very thankful for her. And of course, when I went to go talk to her about receiving the award, to congratulate her, she looked like she wanted me to go away, unless she wanted me to turn around. It's just me, like, we're not even in front of an audience. But now I'm going to get a moment in front of an audience to brag on you. So Donna, she won the Texas Education Technology Leaders Grace Hopper Award. It's given to a district chief technology officer who best represents the model of leadership set forward by Grace Hopper, a pioneer of computer programming and leadership in U.S. Naval Career Admiral. It serves as our outstanding CTO of the Hewitt Award. And so we're very excited that Donna has received this, and I hope it's anyone more deserving. She truly could just, again, just like Kelly, we think that's so much better from the moment that you got here, but quietly working behind the scenes to make sure that our kids and our staff, our parents had a feeling of it. So thank you. I know you care about all the things in the grass. Congratulations.
Okay, students, families, y'all are more than welcome to stay now for the rest of the meeting, if you would like to, because I'm sure it will be of a lot of interest to you, or y'all can step out. This would be a great time, so we'll hold a quick 60-second recess, and if you'd like to stay, great. If not, no hard feelings. That brings us to item number six, agenda-related public comments. The board will hear comments from the public at this time. Individuals wishing to speak must have added their names and topic to the public comment form online prior to the start of tonight's meeting. If you did not do that, you are not permitted to speak right now. Each speaker will be given three minutes. Please respect the privacy of others and refrain from identifying students, employees, or other community members by name. Comments on any subject, whether positive or negative, must be courteous and respectful. Your comments should be directed to the board, not to the members of the audience. Any speaker with a specific complaint about a district employee decision or operational issue should present that complaint through the appropriate mechanism, which is the district's formal grievance process. Speakers with a specific complaint will be referred to District Administration for information about the grievance process. We have two speakers this evening that signed up. The first one is Aileen Blakowski.
Good evening, board. My name is Aileen Blakowski. I've graduated Prosper ISD and two former students. I'm here to talk to you tonight about Agenda Item 7A. In August of 19, or sorry, in August of 2022, our district was rocked by a scandal. Former bus driver had molested two kids for a year. That sparked a statewide citizen investigation into matters just like this. And so what's interesting is that public information requests into the TEA have revealed that Prosper had not ever used the misconduct reporting portal. And this was true for a year and a half. Never, not even the bus driver. But somehow, suddenly, in the last six months, Prosper has a lot of reports from the TEA. So it appears somebody's recreating history. But what's interesting is, is it can't equally be true that Prosper has never used the misconduct reporting portal and that Prosper actually has a lot of reports. And so we will get to the bottom of this eventually, whether there's a clearance of the superintendent's certification this evening or not, but it is quickly becoming the subject of interest for legislators, for law enforcement, who tell us privately, gosh, I don't know why the superintendent would not put out a press release to inform the public. There's a lot going on here that we don't know, that we need to get to the bottom of, and I will make it my business to ensure that we continue to do that until we have the answers. I'm disappointed in this district. I'm disappointed in this board. I think you all need to do your own research and watch your back, because, not from me, but just because the truth catches up with you. There's only so much covering up and covering up and covering up you can do. The truth will be revealed. Good evening.
All right. Next up this evening, we have Janelle Davis.
Good evening. I hadn't ever planned to attend or speak at another board meeting, because let's be honest, what's the point? You'll sit here and listen for the 60 to 180 seconds that I have the honor of being in your presence, and then you'll do nothing. But an agenda item today compels my comments. Not surprisingly, the TEA has done what it does best. Instead of protecting Texas students like the Janes, it has protected itself and the system. I continue to be shocked at the level of corruption when it comes to protecting public schools in Texas at the expense of innocent children. In early 2023, several of you were sent evidence proving that Prosper ISD had never reported anybody to the misconduct reporting portal, including Frank Paniagua. That evidence consisted of two separate PIR responses from the TEA, and both responses confirmed the same thing. Paniagua's abuse was never reported by our superintendent as required by law. None of you did anything with that information, except take her word that she reported the abuse. But that can't be true, given the PIR responses, and also given two separate law enforcement agencies who have separately confirmed our district's refusal to perform standard due diligence in reporting the molestation of children to the affected public to identify additional potential victims. The seven of you were elected to protect the children in our schools, to ensure that the superintendent is following all applicable laws, and you have abdicated that responsibility over and over again. Instead, you have created an environment where parents who ask questions are bullied into silence and ostracized. Speaking for myself personally, I have had multiple parents tell me that they have been cautioned by others to not let their children play with mine. Some families have moved halfway across the country so their children can finish school without fear of retaliation and continued bullying. Is that really the community that you want to have and the legacy that you want to leave? I have lost all hope that any of you will do anything to ensure accountability for wrongdoing in this district, or that you will do anything to truly protect the children who attend here. I wish I could tell you more of what I know, but I am bound by ethical obligations that prevent me from doing so. Rest assured that I get messages regularly from parents with nowhere else to turn, from teachers who agree with what I say but are afraid of being blackballed. And as the seven people responsible for ensuring the protection of all children in this district and the good teachers who work here, you are failing them. You've failed the Janes, and your continued unwillingness to hold a single person responsible for what happened to those children is reprehensible. Luke 12:2 reminds believers, "There is nothing concealed that will not be disclosed, or hidden that will not be made known."
Okay. That brings us to item number seven. The Texas Education Agency clearance of superintendent certificate. I've got something to read here. "In the spirit of maintaining trust and transparency, Prosper ISD Board of Trustees is pleased to announce that after a thorough review, the Texas Education Agency has fully cleared Dr. Holly Ferguson's education certification. This outcome reinforces what the board has always known. Dr. Ferguson executes her duties with honor, integrity, steadfast focus on providing the best possible education for our students. Dr. Ferguson has continuously upheld the highest standard of integrity and professionalism throughout her 26-year career in education, including her 21 years of dedicated service to Prosper ISD. The board reaffirms its complete confidence in Dr. Ferguson's leadership and her unwavering commitment to the students of Prosper ISD. With the decision of the Texas Education Agency, Dr. Ferguson's track record of ethical behavior and devotion to educational excellence remains unblemished. We thank the community for their patience during this process and invite them to join us in continuing to support Dr. Ferguson in the outstanding work of our educators. We are grateful for Dr. Ferguson's continued service and look forward to her ongoing contributions to our district's success." Dr. Ferguson, thank you.
From all of us.
Yes, ma'am. That takes us to item eight. Oh, excuse me, there is one other part to make everyone aware of. As of a year ago, the board does now go through a background check, much like our teachers do in the district. I wanted to report out to everyone that the entire board, while it is not a requirement of the state of Texas, we absolutely do do that here so that our community knows that seven people sitting up here are background checked, much like our teachers are, because we are in schools as well. So just wanted to make everyone aware of that. Thank you to the board members for going through that process. That brings us to item eight, the informational reports.
Yes. First up, we have Dr. Carrie Thomas with us tonight from the Prosper Education Foundation. She's the executive director, newly named. So, Dr. Thomas, if you'll stand up, just so everybody can see you, we're very excited to have her join us.
Welcome.
Always want to take the opportunity, certainly, to thank Prosper Education Foundation for countless years of support for this district and the way that they continually show up to really allow us to be able to do next-level work for our students and for our staff and just overall for our community. So we look forward to that legacy continuing. Thank you. Okay, so we have Ms. Sees with our preliminary budget. Just as a reminder, we are September 1 fiscal year, and so we will have one more glance in August, which will take us to final. But right now, we're going to go ahead and give you the July update.
Okay, so good evening. I'm here to present the second look at the preliminary budget for '24-'25. So we'll give a quick recap from the previous meeting, projections, the tax rate, revenue, expenses, fund balance impact. We'll give you a functional comparison from '23 to '24. '24-'25, we'll look at food service, debt service, and some next steps. The next couple of slides are just the way the state funds us. So they're just kind of good visuals for that. We are formula funded, which means we are funded on the kids in attendance by the basic allotment and then the programs they are in, and these programs are weighted in different ways. So for example, CTE has a different weight than special education. If we accumulate more than the funding allows us, we must send money back to the state, and that's been called recapture, Robin Hood. Now it's actually called excess local revenue. The bucket represents the school's needs, and when the taxes fill the bucket up, then we get nothing else. If it's, Prosper largely fills our bucket ourself, we get a little bit with the state. But if it happened to overfill, we would have to send that back, and that's what the excess local revenue is. This is just a different slide that gives a different visual of the same idea. As local share goes up, state share goes down, and vice versa. This slide is the tax rate. If you notice, on the far right side, that's our estimated tax rate. We don't expect this to change a lot. We do expect to get the maximum compressed rate from TEA the first week of August. You can compare it to the darker blue in the middle. That was last year's. The tax rate is expected to go down by not even one cent, but it's going down is what we're looking at. And then the left columns are just historical data for you. Some of the revenue highlights and assumptions that we built this on, we're anticipating a growth of 2,500-plus students in average daily attendance. The fast-growth allotment is big for us. I think we're ahead of or behind KD ISD. We grew like 14,000 students over the last six years, so that puts us right there. The '24-'25 amount is 32.3 million. If it had not been per-rated, it would have been 41 million, but we did actually see an increase of 4 million from '23-'24. And we are anticipating increased interest rates and being able to work with some of the interest revenue. So here's a look at the revenue totals, our current projections. The increase is 48.9 million, for a total of 345.1 for the '24-'25 revenue budget. Remember, this preliminary budget does include, because this is original to original, so you have apples to apples, so the preliminary budget does include the $10 million, and then that we approved after '23-'24 was adopted. So that's part of that. The local taxes and state funding have been adjusted from last month. The state has updated their calculation to include MNO and the additional state aid related to the over-65 freeze. So that was good for us, because at one point, we were just thinking it was on the debt side, but they did decide to do something for the MNO side. So we're, the last template review we looked at, we're expecting about 1.6 million for that. And that would happen in this year, '23-'24, and next year. So that was a good thing. You can see federal revenue is going down some. Some of that is ESER. We were able to claim a higher rate on ESER, and it's gone. So the other grants, it's, we don't get as much of the percentage for that. And then SARS and E-Rate. SARS is related to a special education program, and then E-Rate is related to our technology programs. And it's great, but they're hard to predict. The timing is hard to predict, and so we're pretty conservative when we budget for those. The next slide is just revenue by source. It's just a visual for you, so you can see that we have, you know, over 50% for our local tax revenue. The next slide is highlights of the new expenses related to personnel. So since '23-'24 was adopted, we've added approximately 580 positions. That equates to about $50 million with new employee staff raises and benefit contribution increases. A very generic average of a new employee is approximately $77,000, and 12,500 of that is associated costs that would go with that employee. We also have been very successful in collaboration with our Human Resources Department to continue to refine staffing ratios and utilize our new ER and utilize our new ERP staff planning module. So that's been huge for us. The highlights of the new expenses that were non-personnel is primarily inflation. You can see that it's hitting all of us. I don't have to tell anybody that. But there are some big-ticket items that it's hitting. It's hitting all school districts and especially those of us that are adding new schools. One of the things that we all kind of held our breath on was property insurance. Some of the schools were as high as 30% increase. We were able to... Our was about 14% and that doesn't include the added facilities. But we've been told that we received a more favorable rating primarily due to the intentional action that the board took last year to separate the risk property management fund. So they think we're serious about that. So that's what they told us. And then down on the recapture bullet, it's looking like that's going to be less so we can hopefully bring you a better number next month. It's looking to be about 1.8 and we've got 2.5 on here. So this is the general fund budget increases. On the expenditure side, this is separated by payroll budget and non-payroll budget. So you see a $57 million increase in requests for a preliminary of 363.2 million. You also notice that 46.9 of that is directly related to payroll and then over 81% of our funding of the total budget is in payroll. So that's what we like to see. The fund balance impact slide, as mentioned last meeting, there are many moving parts right now. We are beginning the end of year for '23-'24. We had our preliminary audit visit last week. We're working to refine '24-'25 and also looking ahead to '25-'26. With this, we're looking at a budget deficit of 18 million for '24-'25. This number has been reduced from the June meeting due to budget refinement and also the state coming through with the funding on the MNO side. So that was good. And related to that over-65 freeze adjustment. So the revenue is 345 million and the expenses are 363 million. On the '23-'24 impact, that did go up as well because we feel like we're going to get the 1.6 on the '23-'24 year as well. So it's a positive addition overall. So next, we're going to review the expenditure budget at the functional level. This is where we left off last month. We know that we have to adopt this at the functional level. So a couple of things to note are we are required to adopt it at this level. The function tells us why the expenditure is happening. So we group these by like functions to make it a little easier on the screen. The top-left corner identifies the expenditure category. So they're separated with like functions, as I said. So all of these are related to classroom or classroom leadership or administration. So you can see the differences here. Some of these differences that you see are just a matter of some of these jobs handled everything. And then as we're coding and separating things out, that's what's happening with some of these. And there's kind of a summary slide later that'll make a little more sense. The bulk of these are just staffing, software supplies, growth for administration at larger campuses. Another item to point out is that of the 57 million increase you previously saw, 36 million is attributed to strictly instruction. So that's a good thing, too. The next group is instructional-related costs. This is like the guidance and counseling, student transportation, extracurricular. This is mainly just additional resources for new schools and to enhance existing schools. We've added a lot of positions for guidance and counseling, such as facilitators, psychologists, secondary counselors for current schools and then all the non-payroll expenses that go along with that. Functions 33 and 34 are related to growth, just as you can imagine. 35 and 36 are the new campuses and increases associated with a third high school, with all the programs that go along with that. The next group is operational costs. I think sometimes it's easy to forget with a school district our size, where we are running a large business. These areas are needed to provide the support that our campuses need and deserve. Maintenance, function 51, is the big-ticket item. It includes custodial, ground crews, property insurance, and utilities. So you see a large amount there. Security, we always... I always like to say that Prosper has historically made security a priority and we also choose to invest significantly above the state allocation. So of the 4.2 you see there on the security line, we only get about 1.6% from the state. We are expecting to receive a grant of around $700,000 that we will be able to use this year. So this number has been reduced by that, but it will come back to the general fund next year. We've added four police officers, two for Richland opening, and the crossing guards were adjusted from function 34 to this function just to more appropriately code those. And then technology, we know, is a huge part of the staffing and the students for the district. Other costs, this is the end of it. And this is, you've probably heard us talk about SABITAS, very exciting stuff. It's subscription-based information technology arrangements. Accounting requirements make us do this for this function. So this one's a big percentage, but it's just kind of started being around. So that's where that's coming from. Facilities and construction allows us to handle projects, portables, and costs without using bond funds if we can. And then the fiscal agents, like 91 is where we have our budget for our recapture in case that's needed. 99 is appraisal districts and they're all going up on us too for the same reasons. So this slide is the one I was talking about that sort of summarizes it all. I like this slide because it shows that we're very stable and that we have remained stable for the last three years and that the majority of it is in instructional. So I think that's a good way to visualize that. This next slide is busy, I know, but the main takeaway is the instructional percentage is 61.2% out of the budget. And then this is an expenditure by major object. You're not required to adopt it at a major object level, but reviewing it can be very helpful. You can see that 82% of the budget is in salaries. Much like the functional numbers, these objects are identified by different account codes, but these objects actually tell you what you're purchasing, not why. So this is why the salaries and services and all that are on here. This is a look at the food service fund. We're budgeting 14 million for revenue and 13.5 for expenses. This is a conservative estimate based on expected enrollment and growth in meals for '23-'24. We're awaiting numbers to finalize this budget and we will bring any necessary amendments to you in August. We don't anticipate a negative impact, though. This fund should be able to sustain itself, so there's a small surplus there that we try to keep to handle any additional equipment needs or services or anything like that. This is the debt service fund. We are projecting $121 million in revenue and $117 million in expense, which leaves us a small increase in fund balance. This gives us some flexibility to pay off debt or work with Mr. Witt on any advice he has to give. This is primarily taxes and interest revenue and then the additional state aid for homestead exemption. And the whole harmless piece of the over-65 freeze affects this as well. Expenses are primarily bond payments and associated fees. An additional sale would affect these expenses, depending on when the sale happens. And that did happen in '23-'24. So you have an amendment for that to approve this evening. As addressed previously, the $100,000 homestead exemption, it reduces our values, but in the debt service side, it will be held harmless for that. We just need to make sure that we can still make our payments based on our property of value. It could affect the amount of bonds we could sell in the future. We do anticipate a healthy fund balance for '23-'24, staying pretty flat with how it was last year. So the next steps are, we're continuing to monitor enrollment numbers overall and in special programs. We're continuing to monitor staffing vacancies, refine payroll budget with new hires, continue to review and refine budget requests. A lot of this is done, but we keep doing it as long as we can to try to make sure, massage our numbers. July 25 is when the certified values have to happen. I got word today that DITN is certified, so Colin probably won't be far behind. And the other thing that was helpful is that on 7-Eleven, they were both less than 5% protests. So that's good for us. And you know, all this drives our projections on tax collections and state aid. In August, we'll get that MCR rate we talked about. I think it's like the fifth or something, which will help us send everything in to finalize the budget and tax rate adoption. And then we will bring you final budget amendments for '23-'24. And then just keep looking forward to legislation and opening schools into the foreseeable future. Also, I just can't say enough about our staff and the time and effort they put in during this time period. It's a lot. And it's pretty amazing to see that they do all that for our staff and students. So I appreciate them.
Thank you, Ms. Sees, to you, to you for all of the effort, all the work and certainly to drill down and really give us a view into some of those specific objects and what's happening. It's always great for our community and certainly our board appreciates that. I know I appreciate that as a superintendent, to be able to see exactly where the dollars are going.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have Ms. Kane, who's going to give us a UIL Academics informational report this evening. Saw a few of the highlights earlier.
All right. Thank you so much for having me. My name is Racy Kane and I'm the Director of Academic Competition. For those of you that are here that I don't know, and it is such an honor to be able to talk to you about something that directly links to what we're here for. It's interesting that in this world where we have so many opportunities for our students to get involved, very few districts actually put their money where their mouth is and really support academic competition, which you would think that would be the first thing that they would look at, but that's not what happens. So thank you to the board. Thank you, Dr. Ferguson, for always making sure that we're supporting academic competition because that provides a niche for so many students that wouldn't have a niche anywhere else. So I'm excited to talk to you and recap a year of excellence and talk to you about how weekly I'm getting emails from our parents and as our district is growing and our district is changing, those emails are coming more frequently as people are saying, "How do we get involved in academic competition? We want our children to be involved." And so I think you're going to see a lot about that tonight. So the things that I kind of deal with in academic competition, of course, there's UIL Academics, but then there's also speech and debate, spelling bee, mock trial. And then we have our academic competition camps and then we'll talk a little bit about planning for '24-'25. So I've got some... I'm going to be honest, as I was doing this data, I was super excited. I was like, "Oh, wow, I didn't know it was that much." And so you can see there, I'm not going to read them all off, but those are the events that we participate in in elementary, middle, and high school. And I'm going to talk a little bit in a minute about the area where it says prosper specific events. We're going to get to that. But when you're looking at 23 teams per campus, and just looking at this year, we had 680 UIL academic teams that we offered in grades 2 through 12 throughout the district. That's crazy. That's a crazy number. With adding Jones and Jackson, that number is going to increase to 749 next year. So that's a lot of opportunities for a lot of children and that is so important that we give them those opportunities. So you can see 46 teams per campus at the middle school. That's 20 different events at various grade levels. And then at the high school, it's not by grade level. So it's just 35 events. And whether you're a freshman or a senior, you're competing. And quite often, it doesn't matter whether you're a freshman or a senior. It matters how hard you study. So the next thing I wanted to talk to you about is those asterisks. So fortunately, because we are large, we are able to have our own elementary and middle school district. And so when I first started working with elementary and middle school and I said, "Okay," I called my friends at UIL and I said, "How many schools do I need to have my own district?" Because we were paying money to other districts to host these tournaments and they said, "Three." And I was like, "Score, Hays is opening. We're doing it." So we did and it has gone wonderfully. But I started doing some, looking at some data, looking at kids and what they were doing. And what I found was that there are a lot of events in UIL that don't articulate all the way up to high school. And I found that those kids that were in those events, like listening skills, dictionary skills, things like that, they would get to the point where those events no longer exist and they would just drop out of UIL Academics. So I was like, "Well, we can't have that. We need to maintain those students in academics." So instead, I kind of worked through it and created a system where we don't really do the events that don't articulate. Most of my coaches said they're not really helping us a lot anyway in the classroom. So instead, we narrowed it down to those events that are, number one, most helpful academically, but, number two, that are going to articulate up so we can maintain that active engagement in those programs. Then what we did is I said, "Okay, there's no science event." And so in a meeting with some of my coordinators, Lisa Kirby from Christie Elementary mentioned that "science phenomena" was a new, changing way of teaching science. So we got together and we created a UIL... It's not really UIL, but we're going to say it is. Science competition and it is absolutely amazing. Essentially, the students are given a prompt and they have 30 minutes... Or I'm sorry, they have one hour to research, discuss in their little group of three to four what their answer is going to be to the prompt, create a Google slideshow, and then they have to go present that as a group with everyone participating in the presentation. If you've ever had association with Destination Imagination, it's very DI, it's a part of our GT world. That was amazing. We actually had 18, no, 21 teams this year compete and they just did incredible. We also made some changes in elementary speaking. We lowered some of the events that are in middle school down into the elementary to help them really develop their skills sooner and quicker and our kids really rallied and stepped up and did amazingly. In middle school, we also brought some high school speaking down into the middle school. We also brought journalism down into middle school and then current issues and events. So we really want to prepare them more and really make them broaden their mind a little bit more. So this is just, again, amazing numbers. So not everyone that competes in UIL gets to participate at the district meet. They have to qualify for the district meet by being either the top three to six, depending on the level. We had 1,402 students just compete in a district meet this year in Prosper ISD. So that was pretty exciting. All told, we had over 2,000 kids that were competing in academics. Our district results, you can see there, we had 84 district individual medalists. We had 93 students advanced to regionals in a variety of events, almost every event. We had more district champions in district... We had more district champions and district champion runner-ups than I think any other district did. Our elementary and middle, our runner-up was Fur, champion was Bradley for elementary, runner-up for middle school was Rushing, and the champion was Hayes. And then we had champion, state champions, Rocco Spampanato, I always say his name wrong. Rocco Spampanato was the two-time state champion in animation. And then Kayden and Danush that you met earlier tonight. Last year, they were state champion runner-up. This year, they won state champion. And just a little bit about that, they had to debate eight rounds at state. And the first four rounds, they face one judge in each round. They did not lose a ballot. After those first four, they look at the speaker points because each person is given speaker points as they debate. And Kayden received the golden gavel and had perfect speaker points once they adjusted it out of over 100 students. So pretty impressive. And then Danush was third place and he was right on his heels. So very, very impressive. They went on to the semifinals or the octafinal quarters, semis, and finals where they had three judges in each round. I actually do the judges and one of the things that we do is we put three different philosophies of judging on every panel. So it's really hard to get all three judges to vote for you. At the end of that tournament, every judge they faced voted for them. And so that was just absolutely incredible. Then you can see our other state medalists there. Highlighting Prosper ISD, this year we hosted 10 different tournaments, whether it was an invitational or a district and a regional tournament. We do host our regional tournaments next year. Thank goodness, we're going to get to host both of our regions. So our kids don't have to go somewhere else. The last time we really had to travel, we had to go to Nacogdoches. We're just going to leave that right there. Nacogdozer, I was born there. I can say that. So we also got to host the UIL Student Activities Conference. We were the only school that has gotten to, to do that. It's usually at a university. And we were quite honored to have all of the academic district, or academic state directors here. And Dr. Ferguson and Dr. Bradley took time out of their day to come and give them all a tour. And they were just so impressed with the leadership in Prosper, the board's commitment to academics and everything that they've seen. The Texas Interscholastic League Fund, this is a scholarship specifically for academic students. And this year, we are super excited that Kayden received that. And he got the Judges' Preference, that's not a shock, award. And I just wanted him to come up and for one second, just real quick, and just tell you all a little bit about what this has meant to him to be a part of academics and speech and debate.
Thank you, Ms. Kane. Speech and debate and academic competition with UIL more broadly, it's fundamentally changed my life. It's changed the course of my academic career. When I came into high school, I was the kind of student who couldn't stand in front of a slideshow at the board without my hands trembling. I'm not that same kind of student now. And speech and debate fundamentally changed the way that I was able to change my personality, the kind of other students I associated with and the groups of other intellectual students I was able to involve myself with. And the kind of conversations about topics I wouldn't have gotten to learn about anywhere else in my education. I think all of those things made me the person I am today. They prepared me for the kind of education I'm going to go into at the University of Texas and they prepare all students who are involved in those programs for the kind of responsibility and the kind of elevated educational expectations that come for them after the high school education level. I think these programs incredibly important for all the students I've met who are involved in them. And I'm incredibly supportive of the district and the amazing job that we've done running them in PIISD. And especially Ms. Kane, there's no other person I could imagine in my mind who would be better at running those programs for this district.
Kayden, we're going to retain you. We need more of you.
I agree. Yes, I totally agree. It was, it was a sad day when I realized he was a senior. The other, I want to, thing I want to highlight is Lisa Roskins, who is our PHS Journalism Director, was actually named the Journalism Coach of the Year, Journalism Teacher of the Year. And that is a huge accomplishment because there's a lot of journalism teachers out there. But if you know anything about Lisa or anything about her program, it is absolutely deserved and we are so excited for her. And you can see there, back in 2022, she received the other most prestigious journalism award in the state and had a House, House Resolution adopted in her name. Moving on to speech and debate, we've had 15, 6, 5, so 20, 25? 25, sorry, I'm not adding right. 25 tournaments that the, that our coaches have competed in this year. And what we do, what the, and this is something I wanted you to understand about these three people that were standing up here earlier. This is all the events that they coach. All of those events are the things that they coach. I paramount this to this. When Ms. Little and I were talking and she was trying to learn about my world and she said, okay, tell me about this. And I said, okay. Imagine a football coach. You've got one football coach for the whole team. And that one football coach has to coach both offense and defense, and they have to coach every position. That's what our speech and debate coaches do. Because they have to coach all of that and they have to coach both sides. Because every time a student goes to a tournament, they have to be able to debate both sides of every topic. So it's very impressive. You can see our results there, 33 district medals, 18 national qualifiers. That was a lot of people to take to Des Moines, Iowa. Five region and state medals. And then we had eight students advance to the national final out rounds. And of course, at the end of the day, Kayden and Danus were, were the fourth, finished fourth. And really and truly, fourth in the world because there's not another competition like this. And there were, there were teams from all over the world at this competition. Our Scripps National Spelling Bee, we had 421 students that participated in just the campus meets. There were probably 10 times that that competed to get to compete at the campus meet. And so that's a lot of students. Five students qualified for the county meet. And this year, we are actually the host site for the Collin County meet because it is our turn. Collin County Bar Association eighth grade mock trial competition, we did this for the first time this year. And I want to really highlight three of our, the three attorneys that worked with us. Holly Draper at Rogers, Ben West at Hayes, and Jenny Denny at Reynolds. Each of them donated their time to come work with our students every week to help prepare them. As a result, we had 11 students that walked away with individual awards in Reynolds. First home in competition, competition, finished fourth in the competition. So we were really excited about that. Continuing education for our students, we did have, offered 20 different camps this summer. And you're going to get something here in just a second. It's, uh, it's, I just kind of did all of this information in a at-a-glance so that if you're talking to people, you've got some quick numbers if you want to spout off some numbers. But we had a student at our writing camp this last week. And he is just finished first grade going into second grade. You're going to be astounded when you see this child's work. But he requested that we give it to all the bosses and the CEO. So bosses and CEO, you are receiving this child's work today. And I think you're going to be amazed at the, at what came out of that camp and the wonderful things that our teachers are doing through our camps. And then last but not least, just some important dates and these are going to be on the at-a-glance pages that you're going to get. And if you're not following us on Facebook and Twitter, please do. And retweet and re, or share all of our posts so we can get even more exposure for these amazing children. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Kane.
Well done.
Thank you, ma'am.
Your enthusiasm is contagious. I love it.
Okay, our student enrollment continues to go up. Just as a reminder, these are current students who were with us last year and then any of our new enrollments. So 31,277 as of last Thursday, and that number will continue to grow as we move in closer to the start of school. One thing I want to point out about some of the work that the board has done along with our construction teams, locating those properties where you have an elementary and a middle school next door to each other, a middle school and a high school. It's a great recruitment piece to be able to get teachers in because if their child can go to the elementary and come over to the middle school where they're teaching. So Mr. DeVito, we were talking about that the other day and he said he's been using that as a recruitment tool with the high school, that your middle school student can go here and then they can walk to the high school right back and forth if they need to, whatever age that they might be. So something to think about. We're not always lucky to get property right next door to each other. So. Dr. Bradley's here. He's going to give us a little bit of an update on construction.
Yeah, I just want to give you a couple of updates. You've seen, no doubt, the construction going on with the new maintenance building and the Ag Barn. And you know, the Crossland is doing that work. This was money that the board set aside out of the general fund last year to accomplish these projects. I wanted you to know they're going well. You can see some of the pictures that are there. They're moving, they're moving well. We're actually having steel erection going on on the Ag Barn. I believe it's going to be head, be ready ahead of schedule. These were supposed to be ready January 1, 2025. It looks like the Ag Barn is going to finish substantially ahead of time, which we're excited about. And the Ag Barn is, I mean, the maintenance facility is still on schedule. And so if you've driven behind Reynolds recently, you're, you're, you're not unaware of what's going on. But wanted you to know that those projects are ongoing and doing well. And then these projects, we added four classrooms to Rogers Middle School and six classrooms of Reynolds Middle School. This thanks to the community and the board, the 2023 bond that we just passed in November. We didn't wait very long to start construction, right? And so I wanted you to know, these classrooms are ready to go. They are 99.9% done. They need a little bit of furniture and they are ready to go. The technology's up and running. And this is important. The board certainly approved this work. Our team members from Huckabee, Joe Tremblay, Kristen Collins here, Josh Brown, and then from Pogue Construction, Brandon Colquitt and James Pearson are here tonight. I, I just wanted to point out these two projects because it's, it may be easy to think that things just always happen on time. We have been very fortunate in this district that when we said a building was going to open on August 1st, it opened on August 1st. But it's not because there hasn't been issues. Sometimes it rains like tonight. And although I never say that it rains, I always ask them, it didn't rain here, right? Because the building's got to open August 1st, no matter what. But these classrooms are beautiful. They're ready to go. It increases the capacity at Rogers, a little bit over 100 students. At Reynolds, a little bit over 150 students that we can add to those buildings. And so this was phase one. And we're going to talk about phase two in a minute. But I just wanted to remind you, there was a lot going on at Reynolds that Pogue had to deal with, moving portables to get things ready. And so there's been a lot of moving parts going on this summer. But we should not take for granted that these, these 10 classrooms weren't even thought about until December. They were designed in a hurry. We broke ground essentially, really couldn't move until April. And here we are in July and they're ready. And so I just wanted to give some credit to Huckabee and Pogue for making that happen. And for our team, Mr. Shirley and his group have done a great job. And so we promised our, our parents and our constituents that voted for this bond that we would get started early on the middle schools because they were the, the big priority and they have done so. And so just wanted you to see that those classrooms are ready to go.
Thank you, Dr. Bradley, and truly Pogue and Huckabee, outstanding partnership. We couldn't do what we do without your teams in the way that you really work with us and really become a part of our everyday life in Prosper ISD. So thank you very, very much for what you do. It is next level. As I talk to some of my superintendent friends and I hear things and I'm like, oh, well, that's not my experience. So thank you. Okay, consent agenda.
Number nine, you see the consent agenda and the different topics there before you this evening. Any comments on anything? Okay, moving ahead then on that, may I have a motion?
Make a motion. I move that the board approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mrs. Dixon. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Van Wolf. Any comment from anyone there?
Yeah, just a question. Dr. Ferguson, can you explain, this is obviously a big consent agenda. Sometimes we have the handbook, code of conduct, and operating procedures as an action item. Can you talk a little about why we have these in consent tonight?
Yeah, so this is an off-year for our legislative session. So we will head into the 89th. And whenever we have those legislative sessions, our legislators typically will change laws which impact our student handbooks, code of conduct in a more significant way. These are pretty minor cleanup changes because we're not going to experience, for example, like DAP placement for vape. That was one of the big ones that came out of the 88th legislative session. So there was a whole reworking on that process and how that would have to be done. These are more just kind of clerical cleanup pieces, but not a ton of changes because no legislative action behind that.
Thank you. Anything else? I guess one comment going into this legislative session. We do try to have a culture of voting in Prosper ISD. So everybody will have the chance to vote in November, not only on the national election, but the state election as well. So please, I'm certain everybody will be voting, but encourage your friends to do so as well. Okay, we do have a motion and a second. I've had comments with that, all in favor. That is all seven of us, none opposed. That passes. That takes us to number 10. Consideration and possible action regarding the GMP for Reynolds Middle School addition phase two.
Yes, so members of the board, we'll talk about Reynolds first. As we just discussed, we, we talked about phase one. We anticipate three phases for Reynolds and Rogers. Phase one was getting those classrooms done for this year. Phase two is what we're talking about tonight, which will go on from August 1st of 2024 to August 1st of 2025. And then phase three will come sometime after, which is doing some work on the existing building, okay? But, but phase two is an addition of square footage to both middle schools. Both of these middle schools really, as currently exist, can hold about 1,200 students. We put way more than that in them. As you well know, we still have over 140 portable classrooms in Prosper ISD, even with all the buildings we have opened because of the fast growth that Dr. Ferguson referenced earlier. And so what we're bringing to you tonight is a design to expand the capacities at Reynolds and Rogers Middle School and bring them up to par with our new middle schools with Hayes and Rushing and now Jones and soon to, soon to be Mosley. And so this will allow us to get the capacity of these schools up to 1,500 students as well. Also providing spaces that don't exist. So when Reynolds and Rogers became middle schools, we really didn't have middle school choir. I mean, we had a class period and that was it. We did, orchestra did not exist. Middle school dance did not exist. And so in both of these buildings, they've been making do for now. And really trying to run their programs out of spaces that were never designed to, to support those programs. And so in both of these situations, we're going to be adding some square footage. So I just want to mention to you first about Reynolds. What you're going to see in addition at Reynolds is the adding of addition at Reynolds is the adding of a gym that would, would uh, serve as the storm shelter, because we're required to build those now, and we don't have those at, at Reynolds and Rogers. Uh, this will be the addition of, uh, the addition or reworking of the existing band hall, theater, choir, orchestra, locker rooms, uh, landscaping uh, around the building, building BDAs and safety and security components that we did not have originally in the building, a new marquee sign, uh, and reworking, again, a lot of the exterior of the building to make it make a little more sense. Uh, we've got to install some fire lanes and things of that nature, uh, to uh, to make the, the traffic flow a little different as well at these schools. But particular at Reynolds, uh, this is going to occur on the north and east side of the campuses where most of this uh, is going to be. And so that's why you saw us moving those portables this summer, because where those portable set is where we're going to be expanding the building. But what you're going to see in August of twenty twenty-five, uh, is a brand-new space for most of our extracurricular and co-curricular activities, which is going to allow the rest of the building to be used as it was designed, uh, as we get these programs in a place uh, that was designed for them. And so we are proud of, again, the work that Huckabee has done to design this. Uh, Mr. Shirley has, has really kind of run point on this and, and really helped uh, narrow down uh, what we want in this expansion. We took this to bid um, a couple of weeks ago, had a lot of coverage on, on bids. We were a little bit worried that we may not get as, as much bid participation, because it is a renovation, and there's a lot of work going on around the Metroplex. And, and uh, was pleased that we got well over three hundred bids, I think three hundred participants in these projects, which is a, a competitive market, which we like to see. And so uh, coming to you tonight for Reynolds specifically, uh, phase two, with a guaranteed maximum price of twenty-six million, six hundred and twenty-four thousand, eight hundred seventy-two dollars. Uh, if you uh, approve, pending your approval tonight, uh, this work, uh, uh, will start um, uh, tomorrow morning at six AM. And uh, and we will, we will begin to uh, run the, run the clock on uh, getting these going, uh, a- as we already have the crews in place, again, because of phase one. And so uh, we're just going to roll right into phase two and get this going. And so uh, bring this to you tonight for Reynolds, uh, but we'll certainly entertain any questions, or, or maybe have these guys answer any questions that you might have about Reynolds specifically.
All right, thank you, Dr. Bradley. Um, let's go ahead and uh, we can have discussion here in just a moment, or time for questions, but is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move that the board approve the guaranteed maximum price of twenty-six million, six hundred, twenty-four thousand, eight hundred seventy-two dollars for the Reynolds Middle School addition, phase two, as presented by administration.
Thank you, Mr. Linker. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Cavender. Um, you know, again, thank you, Dr. Bradley, for this, uh, and all of y'all, um, Pogue, Huckabee, for all the work that y'all have done on this, and um, hey, getting things done quickly in phase one, allowing us to roll towards uh, phase two right now. Um, any other questions or comments? Okay, uh, hearing none, all in favor? That is all seven of us, none opposed, so Reynolds is good to go. Now let's see if Rogers can make it.
Okay, so Rogers Middle School, uh, similar, uh, whereas Reynolds was about fifty-five thousand square feet, we're adding this at about seventy thousand square feet at Rogers. So let me just give you a little information about that. Again, we're talking about uh, adding a gym that will serve as a storm shelter, band hall, theater, uh, choir, orchestra, dance. I would like to point out that the Rogers Middle School Orchestra and Rogers Middle School Dance uh, exist in a portable today, and has for the last several years. And uh, that's not tenable moving forward. And so uh, excited to get them uh, some space. This would rework um, some classrooms for some steam classrooms that we, we did not have at Rogers. Again, safety and security components, landscaping. But the big difference in our additions at Rogers, uh, as opposed to Reynolds, is that on the front side of the building, if you've driven by, you've no doubt seen that we've already uh, done a bunch of work, reworking the, the front drive and the front loop. And that is because we will be bringing some square footage out of the front of that building. Uh, Rogers' design, uh, has been a great design and served the district well, but where the front office and nurse's office and teacher's lounge is located, prevents uh, traffic flow in the building. And we learned, it was a change we made at Hayes and Rushing to bring those things forward, which allowed for more classroom space and a better flow in the building. And so in this project, we're going to right that wrong, if you will, at Rogers Middle School, and bring those uh, those spaces forward, and rework the spaces that exist to create, again, more capacity and a better flow in the building. And so that, that's why there's a little more square footage uh, add there. Uh, we're having to rework the, the parking lot to adjust for that. And so Rogers is going to have some construction on the, the west, the front side, and then also the north uh, and east side, which will have some impact on the, on the back parking lot. And uh, so coming to you tonight with a GMP of thirty-three million, six hundred, twenty-three thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars. Uh, I would be remiss if I did not add uh, one comment that is not related to the price, but I do, we do, it is important that we mention it uh, i- i- in with the board's acknowledgement. These two schools are going to be difficult this year. Um, it, it's going to be difficult to uh, to matriculate around the building. Uh, there's going to be challenges with traffic. Uh, we've anticipated this, we've worked with the town of Prosper to come up with traffic flows that we think make sense. But I told you earlier that both of these schools were designed for twelve hundred kids, and they're both going to have well over sixteen hundred kids. In fact, we've already closed enrollment for Rogers Middle School to prevent any more enrollment there. If Reynolds were to go above seventeen fifty, we're not there currently, but if it were to get there, we would have to close it as well. And so uh, there's just no space in these places. And so, you know, we're, we're, we know we need middle school five, middle school six, middle school seven, middle school eight. But if you have a kid at Rogers and Reynolds this year, there's going to be some pain involved in that. And we're going to do our best to mitigate it, provide uh, all the measures that we can to, to help. Uh, we've already done that with the bus lane at Reynolds, we've already reworked uh, the traffic flow at Rogers, but it's going to be difficult. I would encourage those who live within the walk zone of these schools, uh, walking will likely be faster than driving your kid point two miles. Um, it, it just will. There will just be, there's just some physical impossibility to get seventeen hundred individual students dropped off in this, in this place. And so while I'm asking for approval of this uh, guaranteed maximum price at Rogers tonight, I, I do want to mention, we know there's going to be some difficulty here, but I do believe that what the voters asked for in the twenty twenty-three bond and the end result of these projects will be a much better situation for the next fifty years in Prosper ISD. And so uh, w- we understand what we're asking for, uh, but I believe that this is the best option for all of our students.
All right, again, thank you, Dr. Bradley. Uh, let's go ahead and do the motion, and then we can speak towards this one. Um, is there a motion for Rogers?
I'll make a motion. I move that the board approve the guaranteed maximum price of thirty-three million, six hundred and twenty-three thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars for the Rogers Middle School addition, phase two, as presented by the administration.
Thank you, Mr. Van Wolf. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Um, yeah, Dr. Bradley, thank you, to your point, um, everybody should be looking for communication parents of Rogers and Reynolds. Um, I know that the principals will get stuff out, um, specifically speaking to this, but to your point, I don't think that we can reiterate that enough, that um, please, patience um, for everyone with this. And um, if there's any complaints about that, I think it's T. Van Wolf at Prosper ISD.
That inbox is full, actually.
Having fun.
Give you bills off on them.
My son can walk to Witchwood, she can walk to Reynolds, so.
There we go. He's fine.
I like it.
I will say it's the first time our community will experience this level of construction with a renovation. Up until this point, it's all been new buildings, and now what I always say is our backend's catching our front end, right? And because we're now in the middle of renovations, as well as constructing new construction, but this will be the first time that our community, our parents, have really experienced having to drive their child into construction to drop them off. The main thing that we all has, have to remember, number one, patience, number two, we have amazing teachers, and what you're sending that child into is an incredible education that is world-class. And I think that's where we've got to kind of center in. And no one, please judge us on the first week of school, on traffic, never, even on a good day on the first week of school, it's just rough.
Okay, uh, any other comments, questions? Okay, uh, hearing none, all in favor? That is all seven of us, none opposed. Uh, so Rogers is good to go as well. We look forward to you guys starting six AM tomorrow.
In your rain boots.
Who's bringing the coffee?
Okay, that brings us to um, uh, we had one sign up for public comment, I don't see her out here, Ms. Galoue, are you here? Um, okay, uh, so that now takes us to uh, report from the superintendent.
Yes. So uh, thank you to our board members who went over to do the first glance, first look at Jackson Elementary. That was a special moment to see Betty Jackson Goacher Stewart. Um, but Jackson is the Prosper family name, and that's why she's chosen Jackson Elementary. Uh, she was moved to tears, and it was a, a great moment to be able to be a part of and really see just the true pride and honor that she had in everything, that the community has represented to her as a lifelong resident, but also to her family members, were there. Um, and Ms. Allen and Ms. Huff, they just did an absolute top-notch job as the administrators to really open the doors and welcome this great, amazing family that really got us to the point that we are in Prosper. Um, so we're excited to be able to see that. She kept apologizing for uh, getting emotional, and I told her, I said, you're supposed to. This is an emotional thing, to have your name on the side of a school building is a really big deal, and you're deserving of it. I will say, though, that um, she is the queen. She did tell us, uh, I'm ready to go now. And so then that was it, it's over, it is, we're finished. Um, so that's how it works with Betty Jackson, so.
Share the, share the story of.
Well, I did ask her too. I said, Betty, do you want to go to the playground? And quickly she went, nope. And I'm like, well, okay, we're not going there either, so you do as she says. So uh, very honored to have Betty Jackson's name on our building, and certainly will be a great celebration when we are able to dedicate the building. It's a great way to connect with our community and being grounded by tradition and soaring to new beginnings. Uh, new hire training, so this is our operational area, and as Ms. Sees mentioned, about five hundred eighty employees that we have added to this point in time. I want to give just a shout out to Ms. Hunt and her team with the HR department, really reworked that whole opportunity environment for our new employees. And so they hear from Dr. Bradley about growth, they hear from me about culture traditions, what we find truly important in Prosper ISD and the excellence every day in every way that we want to provide to our students. And then Ms. Fu- Hunt gets up there and she turns on the fun, and we start playing some bingo, and um, you feel like you're on a cruise ship, but you're just at the community room at the stadium, you're not on a cruise ship. But people are real excited to, to win some Prosper ISD swag, so it's a great way, and they really have flipped everything, so our employees can get onboarded without having to sit through about three hours of an onboarding. So really utilizing our technology to make that process more seamless, so thank you, Ms. Hunt. And then our middle school student advisory, just want to follow up from our final project. If you'll remember, in the spring, the middle school superintendent student advisory wanted to do a school supply drive, collecting all of the unused school supplies at our elementaries and middle schools. And so they were able to do that. Um, and then Ms. Ciotti, who is our Director of Community Engagement, did a great job of really helping uh, get everyone rallied, even though school was out, on how we're going to get this, this accomplished. And so we're excited to be able to see this project truly come to life and to see really just the way that our students lean in to being community helpers and giving back to this great community and those in need, most importantly. I think that's it.
Okay, uh, we will now enter into closed session according to Texas Government Code, Chapter five five one, Section zero seven one, zero seven two, zero seven four, and zero seven six. Thank you all very much for joining us this evening. Hey, the time is now, nine fifty-one, we are back. Uh, let's see here, that brings us to um, uh, number fourteen, items discussed in closed session. Uh, this is fourteen A, consideration and possible action regarding hiring contract personnel. May I have a motion?
I move that the board approve the hiring of contract personnel as presented by administration.
Thank you, Mr. Van Wolf. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Dixon. Um, any comment on this discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor? That is all seven of us, which brings us to fourteen B, consideration and possible action regarding the purchase of the Stetts, Stelzer, uh, thank you, I keep getting that wrong, property located in Light Farms. Um, is there a motion?
I move that the board approve the purchase of the Stelzer property located in Light Farms for four million dollars, as presented by the administration.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Oh, Mr. Linker, I think just slightly beat you there, okay? Um, uh, any discussion to be had on this property? Okay, uh, hearing none, all in favor? That is all seven of us as well. That concludes our business uh, for the evening. Um, I guess the next time we meet, school will have already started, so um, hey, get after it, kids. The time is now, and teachers, nine fifty-two, and we are adjourned.